Your Worship, CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. I rise to worship the passing of the minutes. Maravala Sol Vizcaya.
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Coms. Romano Narret, so second.
All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary? Each one?
We are looking at a different type of problem. You should know, because the problem will not go down following here, right? The attorney, the people of the country are on a different type of problem.
To keep complete reports for acceptance, finance, planning, provision of sources.
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Grandville Paradise, rightness today. Acceptance of the finance plan and allocation is as declared on October 6th and 30th, 2025.
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Coms. Romano Narret, rise, second.
All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary? Okay, that was.
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. I am T. V. on the right, the CEO. Rise, we have a committee report. How long the... Twenty twenty.
I, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Rise, the second.
All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary?
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Grandville Paradise, rightness today, acceptance of the decision on 2020. On October 30th, 2020.
Your Worship, CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. I, Marcus Verary, Representative of Maravala Sol Vizcaya. Rise, the second.
All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary?
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council. I rise for your acceptance of the physical infrastructure and transportation meeting. Report held, report of meeting held on October 30th, 2020.
Your Worship, CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Maravala Vizcaya.
All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary? Complete course for adoption, now in the vote, continue.
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Council, Romano Narret, my dear, we have 20 minutes for the report held on 30th October, 2020. Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Rise, the second.
All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary? Box and institution, continue.
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Administration. Members of Council. Lazerco East Vero, rise for the adoption of 20 minutes. For the institution, for the meeting held on 30th October, 2020. Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Coms. Romano Narret, my dear, rise the second minutes for meeting held on 30th October.
All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary? Security disaster.
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council. Hope you to rise for the adoption of the meeting held on 30th February, 2020.
Your Worship, Members of Council, Members of Administration. All in favor, rise the second. All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary?
Good morning, Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. I confirm my courtesy, Maravala Vizcaya. So rise the hour of the committee report, the general purposes. Meeting held on 30th February, 2020.
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Coms. Romano Narret, so rise the second meeting for the vote, please. On October 30th, 2020.
All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary? Committee, the ladies.
Good morning, Your Worship, CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. I rightfully have adoption of minutes for the meeting held of public planes. And I have a committee on October 6th, 2020. Representative of Maravala Sol Vizcaya.
Your Worship, Maravala Vizcaya, right this attention. All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary? Sports and social services.
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Maravala Vizcaya, rise this, we have the committee report. For the meeting of persons, which is the committee on October 6th, 2020.
Your Worship, CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Maravala Vizcaya, second. All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary? Pats and Volvos. Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Grandville Paradise, rightness for the adoption of the Pat and Volchamp, which is on October 6th, 2020.
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council. Coms. Romano Narret, rise the second.
All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary? Education, come.
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council. Hope you to rise to the adoption of the education, which is in hand. So, 30th February, 2020.
Your Worship, CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Maravala Sol Vizcaya, here, rise, second.
All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary?
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council. I rise for the adoption of the Tourism and Heritage Committee Report, meeting held on October 6th, 2020.
Your Worship, CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Maravala Vizcaya, second. All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary?
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council. I rise for the adoption of the Assessment Committee Report, meeting held on October 6th, 2020.
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Coms. Romano Narret, so second.
All in favor, are you against the extension of the Worship by the Worshipary? Members of this point, we propose to contribute to one of our young political officers. Passed last week, it was, uh, I don't know, just like to ask, uh, um, such a pleasure. To, uh, an audience to contribute the moment of stuff.
Good morning, Your Worship, CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Miss Alana Shilman Rodney. Sunrise, 23rd of March, 1979. Sunset, 5th of November, 2020. Positive, very bright. Dedicated. Compassionate. Passionate. Caring. Helpful. All. A good. These words truly reflect our ever smiling colleague and friend. San Fernando City Corporation employee. Public Inspector One, Miss Alana Shilman Rodney. Alana was a public inspector who was truly passionate about public health. She was an employee who participated in many events in the San Fernando City Corporation. Especially in our department of health. Alana always was eager to be a part of improvement of organization. She was enthusiastic about change. And looked forward to enhancing the lives of others through her work, her smile, and her kindness. Never failing to reach out and help somebody in need. Caring for her family, her colleagues, and her friends. Alana gave you a service at various departments which she wrote during her tenure. As reflected on her life and contribute to me. We remember how she lived, how she worked. And made a meaningful contribution to our cooperation, our city, the fear of public health. And the lives of the persons which she touched. She truly has shown us ultimately her reference story. As she stayed with her poor and protected life's lessons. She reminds us that life is precious in every sentence. Make the lives of others enjoyable with your very presence. She shall do. Alana, rest in peace and be merciful. Respectfully, this is the Russia of the United Nations, Public Health Institute for San Fernando City.
Your Worship, the second. We introduce to the moment of staff, and to Mrs. Lam, setting of culture team. Members of CEO, any petitions? The emotions. Please, sir.
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Administration, Members of Council. There's a motion to the street off Park Street leading to Skinner Park Roundby. Name the Dennis Hall Street. I, Consular Rianusin, Representative of the Electoral District of Lazerco East Vero. On the 18th day of November, 2020, moved that. Whereas the street of Park Street leading to Skinner Park Roundby. And the electoral district of Lazerco East Vero has always been maintained by the San Fernando City Corporation. And whereas the residents of the community have no objection to naming the street off Park Street leading to Skinner Park Roundby. The Dennis Hall Street. And whereas the expression of thanks and recognition of Dennis Hall's service and invaluable contribution to the community. A recommendation has been made that the street off Park Street leading to Skinner Park Roundby would be named Dennis Hall Street. And whereas the General Purposes Committee, under whose jurisdiction such matters fall, has considered and approved their representations. On the 11th day of November, 2020. And I recommend, when recommended, that the San Fernando City Council has that thing. Do you resolve that the council name the street as current hearing as the street off Park Street leading to Skinner Park Roundby? To the Dennis Hall Street? So I now move the motion. Control.
All in favor, is that the better for second?
Your Worship, Mr. CEO, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Coms. Romano Narret, so second.
All in favor? Any against, any objection, this motion is here by Karen. The street for the moon at Skinner Park be now known as Dennis Pranalam, Pranalam Hall Street. Congratulations, CEO.
Your Worship, Members of Assembly, Members of Council, Members of Administration.
Any questions?
No question.
Any other virtual matters?
I therefore I attempt to confirm the experience from the desk of the CEO. Very interesting. Your Worship, Members of Council, Members of Administration. Good morning. Congratulations to all presenters at this 11th Saturday weekend. By extension, congratulations to the citizens of the city of San Fernando. And all viewers to the Goodwill Media on our 32nd annual charity. To the mayor and members of the 11th San Fernando Council. And all employees of this city council. And congratulate you on a job well done in ensuring that programs are implemented. To guarantee that the beloved city does not fall into chaos or urban decay. All committees of council, all departments have been operated beyond the call of duty. I thank you all. I believe the council in its first year has been tested more than any other council. With respect to the effects of a failing economy and a virus that is negatively affecting all areas of our existence. You have done well and I trust that you are committed to do so. Congratulations again on our 32nd city celebration, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. And it was 1988 when former old man, Pramish Muthu, moved in motion. That San Fernando, the common San Fernando may be cleared of a city. And has faced serious challenges when he was even someone to Parliament, but he kept that decision. Because he got quite support from the Parliament years then. Uh, we all wish to regret and so look to come along with the 1988 and now celebrate for the 32nd annual street. But San Fernando is a better place now, it's a great place to live. We stand the government, of course, under the leadership of the Prime Minister for waterfront development. As we speak, San Fernando has a custom development and progress. And we look forward to continued prosperity for our citizens. And to the waterfront development, the management board is coming ahead on San Street. And putting, and the way back in the past, you see some of the, the construction work where you own the family port. Is also a master shortly on Irish and foundation, Irish common land. And as we speak, there are buildings we are not encountering. So San Fernando is a great place to be, a great place for progress and prosperity. Congratulations to the city of San Fernando and all citizens who have certainly benefited from the, from the prosperity that we have created. CEO of this plane, we are at a very important part of this morning's meeting. And we are above the signing contract. Uh, with Dr. Michael Anthony in operation, who continued documenting the history of San Fernando from 1900 to 2020. So for today, that Dr. Anthony's last chapter in that book, 2020, there's a bit of a pandemic, a bit of a history kind of real experience. Uh, for those of you who read history, Anthony wrote 5095 to 1900. Uh, many, many years ago, and that document is available to speak certainly about the evolution of the city of San Fernando. And the history of this history and the council decision a couple months ago. And Dr. Anthony was here this morning, invited the CEO, our exec, to forward to Dr. Anthony now, the contract signing. Uh, to take this city for another step of history. And due to this, when it comes to the quick design, I asked the team, you know, very carefully. And the man, Sanu, to sign this contract.
Good morning, everyone here. And thought that this is the night they would want on this subject. How well do I remember that Friday morning? When I had phone, Rati, to say. And I'm sorry that I just had to say because I know that they are attacked, etc., etc. But, oh, they, they know you, you know someone. Because they know you love them. And I did, you know, you love someone, but you, um, for, for staying. So it doesn't compromise a lot of humanity here. But you will just give to call them like they mean, you best choose. And then, I, so I said, Rati was saying, because I loved him, he was my friend. On one Friday morning, in October, I think it was, uh, 1995. He invited me to come to the restaurant where he had, to discuss a certain matter. And then, he said, invited a concert pamphlet he wanted to have here. He says, San Fernando is becoming very popular. And he wants to have something that he can send to people who would like to have, ask him. Could they have something about San Fernando? And it's good, I think it's a good idea, so. So I told him, yes, it's a lovely idea. I said, and, um, I would quite like to recommend it. He said, but I want you to do it for me. Anyway, so I said to him, well, please let me see what we have. Statistics and articles, whatever you want, some of the books, just to let me have them. And I know how I am going to operate. Anyway, um, he said to me, well, both of my, want to, the man is wrong. And I asked him to show you what we have on San Fernando. What comes to this world and everything about San Fernando. So I went there and this man in the world, I can't remember his name now. But, uh, he, he was very, very kind and very attentive. And showed me exactly what he had. So I saw this and I went back to Rati, he was here. And I said to him, really, uh, we went to the book and he showed me everything he had. And I regret to say that I cannot write a pamphlet on San Fernando. And he said, oh, no, tell me. Then give me a material there, look for, tell me you cannot do it. I said, you know, what, I saw there, it's not a material for a pamphlet, it's material for the book. And he said, so I said to him, I will work with you, of the, you know, if you want to attempt writing the book, I shall write it. But it deserves a look. Because you know, ladies and gentlemen, there were so many things. So many things with that word, San Fernando, to this church of San Fernando. I have a one in which a man put it nearby, wrote to the mayor of San Fernando, I think. I should have refreshed my memory of the year, but it was somewhere around 1990. And he said, could you kindly, Mr. Mayor, allow me the privilege of raising my sheep and goat? In that street which a priest afford, Paris from that. The grass there is green and low. And I would be so grateful to give and allow it to just come back by another. And I found that very remarkable. And there are other things which are very remarkable too. Take the library in San Fernando. This, um, what do they call again? Free library in San Fernando.
Palae.
Kind of free library, thank you so much. Um, it happened that that place was the market place. The market place, my dear. And nearby across the road was the, was the big Presbyterian chapel. And it was very, very sad development because, um, on Sunday morning, the people who were at the market were there. And, and of course, on Sunday morning, the Presbyterian, is it Presbyterian? I think Presbyterian, I can't wish I could say mass. But something is not quite correct with the cool sticks. And it appeared that when the gentleman in the market spoke with a hand and an eye. That's on the travel to the, to the Presbyterian church. And when the Presbyterian ministers preached, there were, there were the wind to the market. At least this was what operated at the time. And of course, they liked the land that they were central in. But the, the priest always got people who would, with him, say that for him. Now, use the type of the sermon, but he could use better language.
Thank you so much for your recap of the history of San Fernando. Uh, Dr. Anthony, Dr. Anthony, for your clarity, for which the city lived in San Fernando. And a technical institute, a little room in San Fernando. And wrote several books, one of them I think is, was it a date, San Fernando? Tell me, San Fernando. And the rest I didn't really understand, just to joke. So, uh, it is a true memories memory, but instead of I love her, I couldn't remember the other time. I called his daughter, the Iraqi, who's saying, oh, yeah, you too. He said in 1816. But, uh, I have an amazing memory, amazing talent that we have now this morning. And let's give her a round of applause.
I want to correct this, this is very, it's very important to correct this. When I spoke about, when I think you did today, I want to speak about 1816 or anything like that.
I'm unclear on that. It's not a sitting.
I think it was 1995.
Thank you, thank you for correcting us. Okay, so can we proceed with the, 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 the part of the meeting?
I think it's a formality. It's been released on a presentation, I guess, after.
Thank you all in this part of the, this part of, in our midst, we have a group of very skin, which start in Americans and one other is San Fernando. And he is ex- Suzy, representing Dennis Hall. So, Maravala Zama, are you ready? So, Maravala Zama will take us to the next phase of this morning's event meeting.
A very pleasant morning to all. I extend greetings firstly to all to our citizens, Your Worship, the mayor. I extend greetings firstly to all to our citizens, as worshiped the mayor, if you never gather. Regardless if we're excited for the good by this time, we all know I'm June. Mrs. June Williams. We extend congratulations to all our awardees who were awarded on Sunday and who are here with us this morning. The others were here with us this morning as well. We are a most unique council that we represent together when we all stand together in the interest of the city of San Fernando. And even if we're at a great, um, even kind time, even an honest disagreement to work together for the interest of the city of San Fernando. At this time, I would like to introduce some wonderful entertainers. Miss Michelle Dowrich will be singing a song of San Fernando accompanied by Mr. Peter Lockhart and Mr. Joshua Grigor.
Happy San Fernando Day. This is a city, this is a song. This is a world home, often belong. This is a city, this is a song. San Fernando, we live on. Look to the west friends and see the tide. The sea makes a feed for the bride. Look to these flats of the rapid hills. From where it's come to risk, which has a sort of veil. This is a city, this is a song. This is a world home, often belong. This is a city, this is a song. San Fernando, we live on. At the heart of the city, the sea awaits. And never read one, that secret place. The cats still hide, it's kind of rude. And never read the best of the truth, we all join in. This is a city, this is a song. This is a world home, often belong. Often belong, and here was this. This is a city, this is a song. San Fernando, we live on. Look to people, and the way of life. They struggle hard and step in time. Even the nation prefers men your way. And the nation's thoughts never end today. This is a city, this is a song. This is a world home, often belong. This is a city, this is a song. San Fernando, we live on.
Thank you very much, Michelle, for that wonderful, wonderful rendition of our song of San Fernando. Those of us who may not be familiar with our city and may find twenty-two years songs a little bit when we are even celebrating this in the events of being a clear the city in nineteen eighty-eight, when we have been a municipality for one hundred and sixty-seven years. As we continue with the morning's proceedings and invite someone who certainly is no stranger to any one of us, social media influencer, artist, member of a good old bunch, and the show with us is Alan this morning, Joshua Grigor. The old country of Alabama. And I want to thank the mayor, thank you, this was to them, them councilors, sit on their proper, pass the wine in the back. So, our councilor, they've put on good floors in the moment, through several council meetings. They have a good design. I want to acknowledge two women who are part of our council, first councillor S L H, Dr. Julia. And our other deputy mayor, Dr. Terry, and I'm for seeing women fight to the stage this time.
Number one, would now like to start the presentation, citations. So, this week will begin with ninety point nine, uh, the, Mr. Kenny first. So, ninety point nine, based on poverty streets. Ninety point one, based on poverty streets in San Fernando, is a only radio station in the city. Since then, two thousand four, the station was conceptualized to highlight strictly cultural context, which was welcomed by cultural industry from a financial perspective. It remains a only radio station that plays with all music. This, this now audience extends from the Caribbean to North America, with a huge following of nice quality. What kept up to date in current affairs and events. Today, the San Fernando City Corporation salutes the visionary of San Fernando, we find. This will be a culture-raising radio station, Mr. Kenny, perhaps. I would now like to invite Deputy Miss Gallo, and former vice-senator, Mr. June Uvalios to present the citation.
As I said prior, I want to represent a different pilots of all teams in San Fernando and widely represented from this court. As for West, Daramine, up to the stage this time.
Mr. John Hoyt, formerly of Hoyt Federal Page office of Mariachi Street in San Fernando, made his name for himself as a football before opening his own business. Mr. Hoyt provided sponsorship upon coming steel bands such as Storm Clay, Organets, and Hoytolians, and in collaboration with Six Ten Radio Station to sponsor a bomb competition on Tuesday morning for steel bands. Mr. Hoyt also assisted in sponsorship for several other sporting entities such as Network and School Network. Today, the city of San Fernando will pay tribute to this kind and generous son of the soul, Mr. John Hoyt. The citation presented by former director, Mr. June Uvalios.
Personally, I do, I, I remember Mr. Hoyt personally, but my, one of my brothers started this as, as a work career. Working at Hoyt's right down the, down the Rock Coffee Street. And at closure of Ansetec last year, he would have left to the capacity of construction manager. So I thank Mr. Hoyt for his contribution in the life of many young people. As we continue with the morning's proceedings, I would like to invite the councillor, Elizabeth S. Spero, Mr. Julian Cussey.
This worshiped the mayor, all of our junior girl, the deputy mayor, members of council, the CEO, members of administration, especially invited guests, members of the media. Pleasant good morning. This morning, I would like to speak about a short biography of Mr. Torrance Mohammed. Mr. Torrance Mohammed was born to Indian immigrant immigrants who came from Bengal, India, and settled at Ivy Village, Princess Town. He's a founding member of the Arawak Dance Group, the San Fernando Arts Council, the National Dance Association of Trinidad and Tobago. He was a city councillor for sixteen years and served as deputy mayor in the San Fernando City Corporation from nineteen ninety to two thousand and three. Torrance has been a cultural activist for over fifty years. He served in the capacity of producer, artistic director, choreographer, dancer, actor, tutor, and adjudicator. He was awarded the Medal of Merit in nineteen seventy-six for his contribution to the cultural development of our society. Today, the San Fernando City Corporation salutes Mr. Torrance Mohammed for an advocate dedicated to enhancing and celebrating the talent of our youth. I would like to call Mr. Torrance Mohammed this morning on speech.
Depending on the area, who the councillor is, my wonders are that district is more challenging than the other. And I'm certain the next councillor I'm going to call will say that he has one of the more difficult districts. But councillor, councillor, I'd say, the people I think are more difficult than them on there. But I want to invite the councillor from Maribeter West, Mr. Matthew Johnson.
Thank you all, Mr. Lamah. I have a deep blessed electoral district in the city to represent, let's get to clear that out. Good morning, all. His worshiped the mayor, all the much-well regret, and deputy mayor, members of council, Mr. CEO, and members of administration, former minister of culture, Mr. June Uvalios, members of the media, our viewing and listening public. Good morning, again. I have a distinct privilege and honor to say a few words about the late electoral season. In two thousand and three, the season was In 2003, Miss Caesar was awarded the nation's second highest honour, the Shakonia Medal Gold, for outstanding service to Trinidad and Tobago in the field of music and community service. Joy started singing, pursuing her career in St. Joseph's Convent, San Fernando, where she competed in numerous competitions successfully. By musical definition, Miss Caesar is a dramatic soprano and in 1964, 1966, 1968, 1974 and 1976, attained first place in vocal soprano solo class. In 1968 and 1974, first place in operatic aria class and in 1976, first place in ladies' duet classes in the music festivals. She holds the championship trophy for vocal and sound singing, ladies' duet with Pat Bishop in 1976. She has set a record which is yet unbeaten, in the operatic aria class in the music festival Female Voice, by attaining ninety-five marks during the aria Una Vuché Coco Far from Lucini's Barber of Civil. Miss Caesar has also conducted performances with steel orchestras such as N S D Fong Clay, San City Steel Orchestra, T C L Group Skifull Bunch and has adjudicated at various competitions for steel orchestras, piers, service, vocal and instrumental unsung. A former vice president of City Group, the world's largest bank, she has influenced the continuation of two major cultural programs designed to keep the culture of our country alive through the youth of our nation. The City Bank Twelvem Under T T T Program Eleven Years. She has the distinct honour by virtue of her performance, achievements and contribution to City Group, Trinidad and Tobago Limited, of being appointed the first female vice president in Trinidad and Tobago in 1994. She held the portfolios of senior country operations officer and head of technology, country senior human resources officer, head of training, head of public affairs, quality director and head of city service. She was the chairman of the Nakurima School and a board member of the Southern Academy for the Performing Arts. My grateful heart overflows with gratitude to my God as I share my God-given talents with my community and my country. This was the moment. Today, the San Fernando City Corporation salutes Miss Joy Caesar for her invaluable contribution in the sphere of music. And receiving this award on her behalf is Mr. Peter Lockhart of the Southern Esquire.
My pleasure, sir, and Michelle, and members of the Southern Esquire. To perform for us today. And I was looking forward to this particular introduction because we, we share a rivalry from way back when, when you saw me completing in 2016, when I ran for the Sabrelet Coral District. The councillor to Springvale Paradise, Mr. Langton Jones.
Good morning. You worship old and junior river, deputy mayor, old and doctor referee, the same, other members of council, San Fernando City Corporation CEO, Mr. Andrew Singh, other members of administration, former minister of culture and Miss Culture, San Fernando, Mr. Joel Uvalos. Our audience, other special guests, members of the media. This morning, I was presented by your whole auditory and I followed my glasses through. So, believe me, this award, if I make any mistake in reading, they will correct me. Ms. Deborah J. R. T. Sackor. She is a three of yours. She holds a BA honours in English Literature, postgraduate diploma in international relations and head of BA honours at NBC. An accomplished writer, she has earned a new field fellowship in journalism and was also called at Cambridge University. Deborah serves ten years as a journalist and with four journalism awards. Deborah is a, is a, is a great powerhouse in dramatic performance. You know, a writer par excellence. As a motivational speaker, she's exceptional. She has become an icon in this field of poetry and pioneer activity, led to the formation of the Poetry Foundation, an institute dedicated to the training of the oral arts, drama, public speaking and poetry in performance. As founder and leader of the Poetry Foundation, Deborah trains children and teenagers to be fluent in oral expressions, dramatic monologues, poetry writing and performance, public speaking, chorus speaking, debating and other creative forms of the spoken word.
Go ahead.
She has staged several Shakespeare's to date. In July twenty seventeen, she staged a scene from Shakespeare, The Tempest, entitled The Isle is Mine. And in August twenty eighteen, an exit from the TV show, Wooten Slant for the Palm, around India. Deborah is author of fourteen books and she has staged twenty-three annual poetry productions, recent productions available long ago. The most recent dramatic activities are the staging of a poetry twenty-three. We played games in twenty eighteen and is now in the business for a current Shakespeare production, The Twelfth Night. Today, the San Fernando City Corporation salutes Ms. Deborah J. R. T. Sackor for immense contribution in the sphere of literature. For that, this is the paper, this is the citation, Ms. Deborah J. R. T. Sackor.
My friends, as I call the next person to the podium, I do not envy the position that he holds at all because we, on the other side, was proud of him and even the young team was proud of him. But certainly, this gentleman does have the interest of the city of San Fernando and he has dared to have him as our mayor and invited us to stand and welcome the Mayor of San Fernando, Junior River.
Thank you, please have, please have, yes. And we really have a arrangement here. Our master's secretary has put about two members of Southern Esquire before, but it's much more profound than that. This Michael Dodge is the mother councillor Johnson. So you know we're not paying Michael. And the young man performed with the panel while ago, the son of the mayor, so you know they didn't pay either. As a matter of fact, I had nothing to do with this performance here today. Yesterday, I think it was this George, I met George Wilson of the, and demanded that he come and perform this morning. And I think the last time I did him say that he was too busy, did not make it. And then I got him asking this morning, what time is the function today? So this George went, I go, George, whatever should get should get. You're getting ridiculed. I'm very pleased this morning to be in this and I'm sure all members of council and this is very good distinction of persons, of street tap people persons. And it tells you what San Fernando is about. Because when you look at this, this group of persons here, who are supposed to standing, and not just in San Fernando, but at the national level. And if you go to list the performers in this country, their standing performers, you'll find that ninety percent of them came from San Fernando. This is in this regard that the council met and declared this year the year of the arts. This idea came to me, I was sitting somewhere here in the bars for the funeral service that we have, I don't call it Tora, for this whole, it is Pramala. When I look around at the audience that morning, all I saw was just cultural persons who contributed significantly to the art form or shape, you can have the cultural landscape of this country. And here we are, so new, somebody right before the Ojus Pass. And so many good things were said about this Pramala that morning. But that, this, just only for, with the energy, spoke about the character of who Pramala was. People were amazed and shy. One of the things we heard that morning from his wife, that Pram was a very shy person. Pram hated to be on the stage and lived like crows and was amazed that people liked him. His wife said that that morning, that morning, when he was in hospital, he came to see him. And he was shocked, he said, they're coming to see me, they're coming to see me. That's what we have, we have a lack of appreciation and we just do this to know that people are liking, we give them applause, we buy them up. And the members that are part of the program, we have two, the CCA, the Mr. John White and Torrance Mohammed. Here, picture, let's see, we're the tentative development of San Fernando. When I mentioned Mr. White's name to municipal council, who didn't know who he was? And John White sponsored football, sponsored netball, it was net, a point chatter, this was the name of the network. And Mrs. Williams was a member for each other's, it's all part of that event. Mr. White had a little page shop on Ariad Street, between, uh, Child Street and, or between small page shop. And there were other companies who had the resources that could assist him and sponsor him, did not. He founded the business to help and help others. He started others in one or two years because he needed a help, a good partner, that runs San Fernando, who wanted for his pay. That's how committed he was. When the factory didn't have sponsorship, he was there for company. When we were looking for, for, for a bomb competition on Ice Street, he went to Mr. Morodari, Nazir Morodari, the father of former mayor of San Fernando and got Six Ten ready to sponsor a bomb to the sting button on Ice Street. So he made a significant contribution. We don't, we have to, we need to understand that Mr. White was part of San Fernando and did so much for San Fernando. I admire Torrance. I could go and Torrance had, in Iraq started in Haras, coming out, next thing you know, a church, next to the San Fernando, upstairs, San Fernando, there is a school, a bomb school, it would be. So, yeah, if Torrance, people go to the week, Torrance was here this morning, will be here next week. This is largely bypassed. This morning, we have produced all these persons. And I'm here this morning to share a few thoughts, my thoughts of this, this Pramala. Then his interest in the arts started at Nakurima College under the guidance of Mr. James Rock. This influence him, this brought a tuning and others to form the performing arts in Pram, Tobago. The performing arts, where it was a group of young people who did what others on the stage, who gives with a mic in the centre of the stage, can show you a very proper song back and forth, who surely guess others who were performed, but it was king in on time and who set the course and narrow for us the audience to enjoy it. He also did lighting, the all technical working guy on stage management. However, it was his knowledge, historicality, his ability and don't give appeal that propelled him to the stage as a performer and gave him national and international recognition. Then his whole, the man called Pramala, was this and many more. As a comedian, then his occupied a unique and relatively unexplored niche that his talent and skill as a wordmith filled the capacity. A man like this was born to tell a story. His talent was not turn or loom, but was woven into the very fabric of his charity pool. Then his whole, knowledge of the bullion story and the unique mannerism had made us who we are and who we are to this day. He was the leader of the conversation, poking from the serious, the mundane and ridiculous with an insistent rhyme that would make you laugh till you die and until you cry. Pramala was our social mirror, pointing out our flaws, a beacon and exemplar. In his practical will, he leaves no shoes to be filled, a bush to walk his path and reminded us, we have to watch our protect. Today, the San Fernando City Corporation is honoring him by renaming Park Street, Beat After Him, for his immense contribution to our city. Today, receiving this award on behalf is his wife, Miss Natasha Lewis, wife of his dear Pramala and soon to be a very long-term girlfriend, Miss Natasha Lewis, and she should be. Thank you all this morning for attendance, to be in particular for this very special occasion and we, the media will be with Park Street to unveil the street sign that is most of this very special.
Okay, peace, man.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm just...
Oh, okay. Ivan!
Go in for belly, yeah?
Go! Ready, go then!
What's your content?
I'm telling you!
I'm telling you!
I want to say that, um, on behalf of Dennis Sprang Alang Hall, I am very happy. I want to thank...
Mayor.
And the show, members of council, all the awardees, all the officers, everybody who took their time today to be here. Dennis appreciates us, I know he would, from the heart to know that he got the entrance to the Forum of Calypso. Yes. And netball. Also, I just say thank you so, so much. I'm so happy, I don't even know what other words to say. You know, he deserves it.
Thanks, Mother Mary.
Yes, thank you so, so much. Natasha Lewis, sexy Susi Calypso.
Wife of, the wife of Dennis Sprang Alang Hall.
The fame.
Today, Junior Regal, Mayor, this is yourself. Today's a very special day, as we acknowledge our son of the soil, a man who grew up in this area, spent a lot of his time in Skinner Park, whether it's sport, anything I talk about, Dennis was a part of that. This street gives you an entrance and an exit to Skinner Park, there's no fitting place that they have him acknowledged that at this, this venue. We want to congratulate, um, Mrs. Sprang Alang for being here with us this morning on this very special occasion, the San Fernando City Corporation, the members of council, understanding the value of this. Mrs. Williams, here again, she supports us, and Rachel Price, a friend of Sprang, and all of us who are here because of his role at Sprang with the plan, wherever he is, he'll be very, very happy for this.
Who's supporting the Dennis.
One can sign behind. One can sign behind.
Yes. And I'm doing it for two reasons, as you said. One which you are not familiar with, as the past president of the San Fernando Netball League, he was one of our greatest supporters. We look forward to seeing him every evening on the big pictures. He made the game a little more enjoyable than the others, so we're happy to have that. And then, the past Minister of Culture, we know him in Skinner Park, with the Calypso organizations. So, this is a fitting tribute to him. Sports and culture, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I must put in the sports as well, but I have to compliment you for choosing him because this street, all those who used Skinner Park, who Dennis Sprang Alang holds, congratulations again, and he will be remembered.
I'm Mr. Phil, I'm Mr. Phil. Yes, sir. As comfortable as it may seem, I'm delighted to be here this, this, this good day to have Mrs. Lewis with us, which is the wife of, um, Mr. Dennis Sprang Alang Hall, ensuring that we name this street after Mr. Dennis Sprang Alang Hall. This is the entrance to Skinner Park as well, and it is really fitting of him, seeing that he participates in a lot of programs and a lot of cultural shows as well to add Skinner Park. We are happy that we can do something in recognition of Mr. Sprang.
Thank you.
So, I've been asked just now about the preparation of Skinner Park, at this time right now, Skinner Park is about forty-one percent completed and well on its way. And again, here is another opportunity for us to acknowledge sporting icons, people and cultural icons, because Skinner Park was given to the city of San Fernando for both pleasure, leisure, sports and culture. So, we are looking forward to the completion of Skinner Park and, and what it brings for us as a, as a, as a city. Probably the number one venue for all type of activities, looking forward to hosting at SoFiest again, and something that, that Sprang was closely associated with. So who knows, it may be another opportunity for us to leave something after him.
So worship, how long again, how much time do you think we should be...
I, I'd say about September twenty-twenty-one. But we get it, it's really progressing nicely. And, and, and it's very state that the art, you have something that you can be very proud of in San Fernando. It's about time.
The mayor's box to be right in the air. The standard, the mayor's box to be on the other side.
One of that.
No, it's a four, let me write this. I meant this. I have a lot of the time here.
And what a precious way for us, you know?
Education capital, financial capital.
Industrial capital. I mean, San Fernando has a world economy from there and today, but many years, but continues to.
Education capital.
Because what did the mayor, aren't everything else in San Fernando? In capital, right? Are you doing all some of it, for building capital?
Capitalized and everything, you know?
It's a capital market. However, we stand today very proud, we want to join his goal. We are born as Sprang Alang in Caribbean land of comedy, and it is so fitting that on this day, the eighth of November, that a street was now named after him. Not just any street, but a street and runs the Skinner Park. I mean, this is the home, this is the lifeblood, this is the main artery for Calypso's so done carnival in San Fernando. Your worship, anyway.
There is a pleasure for us that we, the students of our confidence, Sprang Alang Hall, and of course, my sister, part of this exercise, uh, we're very often, uh, we think that we, that we, that we, we do this on city day, or we go to this, congratulations to him. Dennis is a part of this Skinner Park institution for years, as a young man, bringing people far from here, and was true there, he's very religious here, whether it's football, whether it's football, they did not play in that league. And though he was no player, but he well heckled, heckled everybody, and this is what he built, with his charisma, with his confidence, which is a, as he plays a game, and we have people. So this is to me, Dennis, Mrs. Lewis.
And how do you feel?
I am, I am very happy. And I will answer what's, yes, strong out medals, and I found, maybe he used to jump hurdles, and he won, so he was very athletic in his sense of sports. He told me he used to go and harass Abdi Jonah, and then with the netball, right, he was always on North Street, like, when he wasn't a bit too far from here. And I think this, and to the mayor, I am proud of you, because apart from Sprang, I know there's a lot of culture, and I thought as well, and I think it's like the mighty Stirling and everybody going to be happy, knowing in their hearts that at least Sprang started, so the, and maybe the game now, where they are, Skinner Park on them, Black Stirling, perhaps maybe by the time it's ready next year. Right, that is something, because I just, you know, I'm just saying, but I think so. So now, now I think I'm going to go listen in, yeah, semi-final.
You know, what, you know what's progress, right? That was quickly accepted, could end this year, the Year of the Arts. You look at Sprang, at Sprang's contributions, his recognitions of his people, and his love by people, of course, born, children, young people, who are in love, very, very, very true. Really clear, because that was the Year of the Arts.
And it goes down now in history, that history was named after an icon in entertainment. And entertainment is an embodiment to of our art form, because carnival is art, you know? We are our culture. Our culture is not just symbolic of a laugh and a good joke, but it's time for us to see our entertainers, not just as entertainers, but rather as cultural ambassadors for this country.
And educators.
Yes, and educators as well. So, your worship, and to you, Mrs. Hall, I must say thank you for this honour.
And the cops, not for the area.
Definitely. See the politicians coming out? I have one thing to say. You know, sometimes I feel very sad when I see people getting recognition and death. But I also feel very happy to see that they are still acknowledged, and a street was named after him, that his legacy went beyond his life, in other words. And today I saw that many persons receive a word that always were alive in, in us, and it was really something symbolic for me, because I too am a product of this art form. So I say on behalf of everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Help, help, help! Like, how to come south, go and share some food, let me go home one more time. Help, help, help!
Yes!
This is for the sprang.
Well, we do.